Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, July 9th, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 9th, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on January 9th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 9th, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata.
Present.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. San Clemente.
Here.
Mr. Orozco.
Here.
Mr. Moretti has been excused. And Chairman Nansen.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Mr. Tropley, you swear in the professionals, please.
I swear in the testimony of this seemingly the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but yourself. Mr. Malin, Ms. Bean, and Mr. Howard have all been sworn in.
Thank you, Mr. Tropley. Approval of minutes, regular meeting, June 11th, 2018. Eligible voters: Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Orozco, Moretti, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Mr. Merton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Orozco. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Any vouchers?
No vouchers.
Correspondence?
Just what was mailed to the members, that's it. Nothing else.
Emails?
Nothing.
No, the correspondence.
Yeah, just anything that might have been emailed to the members. I have no record with me.
Did everybody do the water management?
Yes, they did.
Okay, good. Resolutions, case number B 803-10, Restoration Family Worship Center. Resolution granting extension of time. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, and Nansen. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Armata.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Okay. Case before the board, case number B 818-06, L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc. Use variance preliminary and final major site plan. Application of L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc., as applicant in One Greenway LLC and Two Greenway LLC, as owner, seeking a use variance in preliminary and final major site plan approval to develop the property as a bituminous concrete manufacturing facility with improvements consisting of removal of portion of the existing concrete manufacturing facility, rehabilitation, rehabilitating the existing storage building, construction of quality control building and weight station, installation of an office trailer near the existing office, the removal and replacement of approximately 13 acres of impervious coverage with landscaping in total of 250 trees, and the installation of the other associated improvements on premises known as Block 177, Lot 62.01, to be formerly Lot 62 and 64, 89 Yellowbrook Road. This application was originally scheduled to be heard on May 7th when it was carried to June 25th with no further notice after some discussion of jurisdiction and the recycling aspect of the application, the board took jurisdiction on June 25th and then this application was carried to June 9th, 2018, July 9th, 2018, with new notice. Expiration date, July 21st, 2018. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Orozco, Moretti, and Nansen. Mr. Butler.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Butler from the law firm of Eckert Seamen's on behalf of the applicant tonight, L&amp;L Paving.
Mr.?
Mr. Chair, Ron Gazeroski on behalf of school leasing, as I indicated I would do, I've sent a copy, I've sent a letter to the board attorney with a copy going to the secretary identifying the properties that my client owns in Altachia.
Thank you.
Have we completely resolved this issue with regard to recycling?
I'm gonna let Mr. Tropley intervene here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have some bookkeeping matters before we begin the case in earnest. First of all, I've reviewed the notice of public hearing, the newest notice that Mr. Butler had published and served, and I find it to be a far more inclusive and more definitive proposal, and it's clear on its face, I have no issue with it. And as far as I'm concerned, the board continues to retain jurisdiction and proper notice has been made. That's the first thing. Then the second thing, when we left the last time, as Mr. Gazeroski stated, there was an issue in whether or not did the board have jurisdiction over the recycling use. In a nutshell, and I'm gonna defer to Jack in a moment, it's my opinion that the board does not have any jurisdiction over a Class B recycling facility, however, and it's in Mr. Butler's notice, we do have some limited site plan review. And I think that at this point, there are obviously other procedures that involve recycling facilities, but I'm gonna defer to Jack briefly to just report to the board your findings as requested by the chairman.
Yes, that's chairman. I've done some research on Class B recycling, and I've spoke to both the recycling coordinators in both Monmouth and Ocean County, so I make sure I get same story, and I did. Basically, once an applicant is filed with the county for Class B recycling, the local boards have no jurisdiction. The input that they get comes through the municipality itself, either through their township engineer, or if they have an engineering department somewhere along those lines. The counties look, stated to me that they look at environmental, they look at screening, they look at traffic, they look at drainage, and they look at soil erosion. Those are the things that they look at when they do that. What we would have under this application with the recycling is that obviously anything that we would look for traffic, truck traffic would be included, even though they do it on the Class B, if we're looking for traffic counts, we would have that jurisdiction. I would just ask some questions of the applicant when he gets into his thing, so that we don't end up with a 50-foot or 100-foot pile of recycled material. They had a temporary permit which they got to clean up the site, and they could bring material onto, as long as it came from their vehicles in, but it had to be moved out and used within one year, and couldn't be sold. My understanding is with the application now for a permanent according to Monmouth County, they're now in for that permit. That's what I found out.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, one other thing before we begin witness testimony. I spoke with Mr. Butler regarding a change tonight, and I've spoken to Mr. Gazeroski. Obviously, in the past, it's preferred if the applicant places his entire case on the record, and Mr. Gazeroski, as per usual, will do his cross-examination, and we open to the public for questions. There is an out-of-state witness here tonight that Mr. Butler is requesting that that witness be direct and cross-examined with public participation, only as to that witness. Of course, there's always the possibility the witness may need to be recalled at a later date. I certainly don't have an objection, just in terms of procedure, if that can be accommodating that witness, I would recommend that also to the board. Other than that, Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Butler's ready to proceed.
Mr. Chair, I still have a couple of questions with regard to this issue concerning the Class B license. My understanding is, is that there was in fact issued a Class B license that was limited in nature, and that in fact, I believe, was extended by the DEP until 2021. That was limited solely, and if you read it, limited solely to the recycling of concrete, concrete pipe, which was on the site. When we're looking at the notice which the applicant has, there's reference in there to bringing in asphalt materials for recycling. That is not a part of the Class B approval which they have.
So, if I, can I just?
Yes, please.
So, just for a little bit of history here on the Class B recycling, when my client purchased the property, they applied for a limited Class B permit through the DEP to clean the property, that allowed them to clean the property. That vested and expired in June of 2017, so a little over a year ago. At that point, they applied for an exemption from the Class B, and they've been operating underneath that exemption since June of 2017. Now presently, they have a new application for a permanent, as Mr. Tropley explained, a permanent Class B permit to process the material on the site, and that's what we have been talking about. We're not talking about the limited that was a year ago, we're not talking about the exception that they're operating underneath now, we're talking about what's happening going forward, and that's the Class B that has been applied.
As to which this board has no jurisdiction over that phase of the project.
Correct.
Correct.
But you don't have an existing Class B permit.
Sir, yeah, but here's the thing, is Mr. Malin explained that it's already on file, it's been filed to the county to acquire that, so as far as jurisdiction, we have no jurisdiction at this point.
I understand that, I understand that.
Yes.
But he can't be looking for something in his notice or his application, which quite frankly, he doesn't have. He doesn't have a permit to recycle asphalt.
I understand that, but as far as the testimony, you know, I feel, and this is me speaking as a chairman, you know, we should be able to move forward because it's all gonna be, if we grant him approval, Mr. Gazeroski, for that recycling, for the site to operate as they're gonna propose it to operate, if they don't get a Class B, they're not gonna bring it in, they're not gonna get, you know, it'd be restricted in the resolution, you know, that they have to get all proper permits and, you know, go through the Class B, it's gonna be in the resolution that way. If they don't get it, it's just like any resolution the board issues, it's based on outside approvals, you know.
I understand the chair's comment, and I also understand the comment of Mr. Malin with regard to the county and the state having jurisdiction.
Correct.
Over that permit. However, one last point which I would like to raise.
Okay.
And that is, is that in the application for the asphalt plant, that application is in the name of L&amp;L Paving, there is also this ancillary application, if you wanna call it, with regard to the permit, and that's in the name of Greenway. Now, I would argue to you that under your ordinances, you do not permit two principal uses on one property, and that's what we have here. We have an asphalt proposal for a plant, and then we have a second use, that second use being this recycling facility. Now, it may very well be that the county or the state has jurisdiction to determine whether or not such a use is permitted, but they don't have jurisdiction to tell you that you have to disregard that for the purposes of having more than one principal use on one parcel of land, and that's what you have here, you have two principal uses.
I'm gonna have to refer to my professionals on that.
Yeah, my response is that the board doesn't have jurisdiction over the use, so the state has jurisdiction over the recycling use, it's not the board, so the argument that's forwarded, Mr. Gazeroski, is moot because there's no jurisdiction.
Well, see, we're not issuing, we will not be issuing a use variance or a use permit for the recycle.
Correct.
That's totally out of our hands. That's not part of the application. As I read it and as I see it, Mr. Tropley, am I reading that correct?
Yes, I agree. I agree with the chair. This is a single consolidated use. By the way, I think all of this will have to be demonstrated via testimony, which we haven't heard any yet.
Right now, we've heard arguments of counsel, so with that in mind, and to the extent that
there's an objection on the record from Mr. Gazeroski, it's noted. I think at this point, we should move forward.
Move forward.
Obviously, we understand what the issues are.
Your board professional has weighed in.
Quite frankly, I'd like to get into witness testimony, if I'd recommend.
Mr. Chair, if I could just interject for one second.
Yes, ma'am.
Section 56 of our ordinance exempts industrial or manufacturing facilities from the multiple, from the prohibition of a second principal use, so this is not a prohibited, this is not a prohibited use, it does not require any additional relief, and as such, I think the applicant should move forward.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more thing.
Yes, sir.
It pretty well is understood, if they get the approval of the asphalt plant, that they will have asphalt recycling. When you create asphalt under the DOT plan, you're allowed a certain amount of recycled asphalt pavement, rap, and just so they understood, I think we understand that that will go hand-in-hand only for the recycled asphalt. That comes with the application for the plant.
Correct.
All right.
Mr. Butler, do you have witnesses you wanna bring forward, and we'll swear them in?
Do you want to swear them all at one time?
Oh, we did, we got everybody, okay.
All right, I'll bring up, or?
Yeah, bring up the gentleman that's from out of town, was, he wasn't here last week.
So, I have three main witnesses tonight, I brought a fourth in case we have time, I probably was more optimistic than I should be, but in case we have time, I have four, and Catherine Sutton is the witness who is from out of state.
Okay.
Do you all wish to stand if the, yes, sir, you swear that the testimony will give the matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Starting with you, how are you formed, please?
Brooke Crossan, R-O-S-S-A-N.
Thank you.
James Kennedy, K-E-N-N-E-G-Y.
Catherine Sutton, S-U-T-T-O-N hyphen C-H-O-A-T-E.
May I ask who the out-of-state witnesses?
Sir?
Who is the out-of-state witness?
Catherine Sutton.
What?
Ms. Sutton?
Ms. Sutton.
S-U-T-T-O-N.
Sir?
Lance.
L-A-N-C-E.
Reddely.
R-E-D-A-E-L-L-I.
Okay.
Thank you, all sworn, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Butler?
Thank you. Before, actually, before I begin with Mr. Reddy Alley, I just wanna confirm that the board is gonna continue to accept jurisdiction over the application. I just, it's just a housekeeping, bookkeeping measure, I just, I wanna confirm that on the record, that the board is, approved of notice, and you're continuing with the jurisdiction.
So noted, we are taking jurisdiction.
Thank you. Mr. Reddy Alley, could you please introduce yourself to the board, and can you talk a little bit about L&amp;L Paving and who you are?
Absolutely. First name is Lance, last name Reddely. My brother is my partner, his name is Larry, same last name, Reddely. We're two brothers that in basically through our childhood kinda worked for our father in the paving business, that's kind of what we did on our summers. Went to high school, graduated high school, my brother went to work, I graduated a year after high school, I went to work for my dad, my dad was in his own business from '84 to about '90, '91, we worked for my father, that's what we did. Mid-'90s, or, I'm sorry, '90, '91, my dad went bankrupt, he lost the business, we lost our home. We had no other skill, this was our skill, paving. So, my brother went to work for a company, I went to work for a company, it was a short stint, maybe six months, and my brother said, hey, listen, why don't we just try it ourselves? He sold his prized motorcycle, I sold my motorcycle, that's what we did, and that was our money. We borrowed money from friends, we bought equipment from people, and that's how we started. We drove around in a pickup truck, we did patchwork, we did seal coating, we picked up concrete from somebody who was ripping out a job. We did whatever we could to survive, that's what we did. And that grew from literally my brother and myself, to my dad came aboard, working once in a while, my mom came to work for us for a little while, and we added an employee, we added another employee, and each year, we kinda just said, hey, it's working, let's do a little bit more. Early on, we were taught from my dad to work, sunup to sundown, never taught the business. There was a gentleman that gave us great advice early on, when you make $10, you take five and you put it away like you never had it, the other five, you learn how to live off of that five, you split it, put it in the business, and that's what we did. And that grew from three people to four people to 10 people to renting property from people to park to, about 2002, we bought a piece of property in Tin Falls, we thought that was it, we had got it. Six acres, we built the garage, we built the shop, said this is it, Larry, high-fiving, doesn't get better than this. And that turned into, there's a lot of potential of growth out here, there's a market, there's a need for what we do every day, and that turned into 20 employees and 25 employees, and then, believe it or not, we outgrew that six acres, which we did not think it was possible. And we started looking, 2015, 16, I think it's time to make a move, and we looked at some pieces of property, and we couldn't really find anything that we felt was the right niche, the right spot, and the right size, and lo and behold, we found this piece of property on Yellowbrook Road, which is a pretty special piece. It wasn't for sale, as, I don't know if any of you've been to the site prior to us, but it wasn't a great, I thought, a great look for the town, but what a great opportunity if we could get this piece of property. We knocked on the door, and we knocked on the door, and we were persistent, and we finally got a phone call back, and we met somebody out there, and we walked the property, and I basically said, we will take it from where it sits right now, don't do anything. We didn't want anybody to get an idea that this property was even a possibility to buy, because it's such a gem, it looked great, but it was a gem for us. And we were fortunate enough that we closed, and Mike will tell you, for two weeks, I said, are you sure we own this property? You sure? Because we thought somebody was gonna come and say, hey, sorry, we made a mistake, we didn't mean to sell you that piece of property. Lo and behold, we got it. And that's where we sit now, we are 55 employees, 50 employees in that range now. I think that we're still hands-on, I'm still typically, other than Sandy McIntyre, the first one at that shop, and I'm there every day, and my brother is in the field every day, you know, he does not walk away from this, this is our life, this is what we do. And we're here now because we think this is a chance of a lifetime, not only for us, but for anybody else that's in our type of business, that needs that other supplier in this county. I mean, there is one supplier of this material in Monmouth County, one, and he no longer sells to us because we put this application in a year ago, he doesn't sell to us. So, we drive to Ocean County, we drive to Middlesex County every day, we drive by all his other facilities, he won't let us on the property. So, we are here now, not only as we think it's the right fit and the right piece of property, but an absolute need, not only for us, but other buyers like us, who really would like another option.
So, you said that the property is the right fit for what you wanna do out there. Can you tell the board why you think it's the right fit?
Absolutely. This board has been out there, you see, it's 35 acres, it is cleared, there's no, very little trees on this piece of property, we're not cutting trees down, we're not, we're actually taking 11 acres of pavement out, putting in grass. There's an existing concrete manufacturing plant that makes concrete, you could put that concrete into pipes and make pipe and make head walls, and all those different types, it is out there, it's got a silo on the property, it's got cold-feed bins, it has conveyor belts, it has all similar things that we're proposing to do in this area, but bring it up to 2018, not 1962. And we wanna do that in the best way, not only for us, but for the town, it's gonna be brand-new, it's gonna be clean, you know, it's all of the great things that could be in that spot, that has slowly, we're slowly turning the corner on that piece of property. And I think because of the size, there is rail on the property, we're close to highways, there are similar uses, again, I hate to beat it up, but if you've been in the area, there's a concrete plant literally across the street, there's an existing asphalt plant across the street, there's Anchor Block across the street, there's George Harms, there's a gun range, there's a pallet company. I think, if not here, I don't know where, I don't know where. Yes, there are residents, there are residents in the area, there's a house right next to us to the north, we purchased that piece of property, we own that house now, and there's two houses on there, we have two of our employees that live there, we bought another house two down from that house, we bought that piece, because I understand it's probably not what the people wanna hear or see, but why not here? It is the best spot, in my opinion, to put it.
And you said that you purchased the property to the north of your property, what were the reasons behind purchasing that property, do you have any future plans for that?
Well, I can tell you, obviously, for the first reason was is that if a competitor got that piece of property and bought it, he's within 200 feet of our property, and he can, you know, fight this application, I understand that, that's what they would do. It's in the SED zone, we bought it not only for that reason, but it would be a great spot, I mean, the big picture for us, the future is, you know, in phases and steps here, we'd love to build our office, build it on that piece of property overlooking our facility, you know, it just made sense for us to do it. And it is in the SED zone, so we said, you know, we can get this, we can build our office building here, and that would be a great spot for us.
You said you purchased the property in 2016, and then you, did you come to the town for any type of planning board approvals?
Yes, we came in for a minor site plan, which was to clean up the facility, clean up the office, redo the big shop, we wanted to move our operation out there, you know, basically, because we had sold our other piece of property to take that money to buy this piece of property, and our clock was ticking on the property that we were, we had owned, we sold it, and the guy wanted us out. So, we came in for a minor, which, we came in front of the planning board for our minor, and we did all of the things that they requested, I believe, if they were not happy with anything that we did, I'm pretty sure that we took care of it pretty quickly. We redid the office, we did the shop, we planted grass, we planted trees, we did everything that they'd ask, there was a drainage issue on the road and, early on, and they'd ask us if we would take a look at that, and we submitted something, and the town okayed it, and we did that pretty quickly being out there. So, you know, we've done our due diligence as far as trying to get that place into something that we all could be proud of.
If you know, do you, is there municipal water on the property and gas and sewer?
There is public water, there is. There is public water, there is natural gas all on the property. We have septic out there, there is no sewer within, I think it's fifteen hundred feet away from us, down Cranberry Road. So we have a septic system out there right now.
Is that approved, septic system?
It is.
Are there any underground storage tanks on the property?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay. And we talked about the history of the property and the surrounding properties. Can you just run the board through the current proposal? And if it's easier for you, I don't know whether it will be, I'm going to mark this into the record. This is supposed to mark it as eight, eight-one?
Oh, hold on.
I'm sorry.
I gave him one.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hold on, I have mine here somewhere.
Eight twenty-four.
Eight twenty-four is correct. Here, you may want to have an extra.
For the record, this is a rendering prepared by Kennedy Consulting Engineers. It's dated January twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. It's colorized, so it's slightly different than the plans that were presented to the board. So that's why we've marked it in the record. And it's really in case Lance, you know, you want to talk about any of the specific sections of the site while you're talking about the uses. So if you could, if you do do that.
Matt, is this the same drawing?
It's not the color version. You had a flash drive last night?
Yeah, we had a flash drive and we lost it.
That's okay. But this is the same plan, but not the color?
Correct, that's the same plan, it's not in color, correct?
Okay.
All right, Lance, if you could walk the board through your proposal. And I guess we could probably start with the Batuminus concrete plant.
Okay, do you want me to do it from here?
Wherever you feel more comfortable.
Would the board prefer me here, or would you want me to go up to the rendering here and I could point it out on the rendering?
Probably point it out.
Yeah, go up to the, take the mic.
This is on?
Yes.
Yes.
So, probably the center of the property, where it looks like you would come down the center road here, which it says... Proposed two-way driveway in line with Cranberry Road, as far as the manufacturing facility.
Can you show us where Yellowbrook is?
Yes, Yellowbrook runs the length of the front of the property.
Okay.
Okay. So that's north and south, Cranberry is east and west.
Okay.
The proposed two-way driveway entrance, that would be the entrance to the facility. That's so if you're coming to pick up material, that's where you would come in. If you come in there and you're, say you're waiting to make a phone, to get called to get material, you could pull in and make a hard right. And those parking stalls that are labeled next to the QC lab, that's where a truck would actually pull in, park, and shut his truck down, wait to be, you know, waiting to be called if he needed to get material. So that truck, if it doesn't need to wait, it'll come in. It'll come down that two-lane road. You'll come up in front of the silos there, which, I don't... Is this helping you, or I'm sorry, I'm pointing on the board and I don't see it. I apologize. I'm talking like we're all looking at the same thing at once. But if you come down the driveline where the arrows are heading, that would be west. Those three, six circles, those are the silos. So a truck would come up, and prior to getting to the silos, he would call in his order to the scale. The control center, he'd say, I'm here to pick up material. What are you getting? I'm getting top, okay. So he would pull underneath the silo, whatever one of those silos that material was, he was getting, he'd go underneath the silo. He would be loading. He would pull up, get his ticket, which is before you get to the control center there. He would pick up his ticket, and he would exit around that loop and head back straight out to Cranberry Road. And then he would exit, leaving Cranberry Road, I mean, leaving Yellowbrook Road, north and south, not using Cranberry Road. It's going to be part of what we tell our employees, which is the rules now. Nobody uses Cranberry Road unless it's an emergency situation. They are going to use Yellowbrook Road, north and south, heading to thirty-three or heading to...
How come you're not using Cranberry Road?
Number one reason is that there is a few existing contracting companies on that road right now. And we feel that using Yellowbrook, it's a direct route to thirty-three and a direct route to five twenty-four, I think it's five twenty-four, in that direction. I don't want to use Cranberry Road because I don't want to get clogged up with the county yard, Campo's yard, Esso's yard. I just, I think for us, it's better to use Yellowbrook Road, for us. So that's pretty much it as far as using the facility. The garage is the big building in the center there, that's the shop that's still there now. To the right of that, or to the north of that, I'm sorry, that's where we will park our equipment. That's where the equipment storage will be. To the north of that is the parking lot for the employees. The employees will come in that northerly entrance. They will come in there, they will make a left and a right and park in that parking lot, right there. That's for them. You'll see on Yellowbrook Road, we have all the planting and the berms. I believe those berms are six feet high with seven or eight-foot evergreens on top. So it's going to be a really nice, I think, shield. It's going to be probably fourteen-plus feet, you know, year one, and each year they'll grow a little bit more. So that's where we will park the equipment, that's where our employees will park. You'll see if you pull in, there's a portion of the existing manufacturing plant that we're leaving up. It's approximately ten thousand square feet. It is called on here, a portion of existing building to remain. That's going to basically be cold storage. We're going to fix the building up like we did the other one, put a new roof, wall siding. We're not going to put heat or anything like that in it. It's going to be for excess equipment that we don't use. Keeping it in, whether it's better to keep it inside. We'll store some of the materials that we may use for equipment, for storage for the trucks, tires, that kind of thing, in there. The front office is still there, that's the little building up in the front there, we still have that. We're asking for, to put in an office trailer. The office is much nicer than it was before, but it is extremely tight. And we wanted to put the office trailers in there to give us a little bit more space. Until God willing, this gets approved and we're working, and it was financially a smart move, we'd like to build our office building on that piece of property that we own next door, overlooking the property. That is our dream, and that's why we're going to keep that up until we have to. I think we're thinking about, hoping five years, we can get a good grasp of if it was a good financial mover, not such a good financial mover. Are we going to talk about the recycling there?
Let's go back to the asphalt, to his concrete plant. What are the, you talked about the general circulation, the trucks coming in off of Yellowbrook Road down the main collector, looping in, or calling in their order, looping in, getting loaded, and then moving out. Is there area on this property for trucks to queue if they have to wait to load up?
As I said, as you pull in, the entrance to the right, those parking stalls are designated for trucks to park and shut their trucks down. They shut them off, we don't let them idle.
So there are no trucks, your proposal, it will have no trucks idling on Yellowbrook Road?
Absolutely not. If anybody's idling on Yellowbrook Road, Sandy McIntyre, who runs the yard, will be out there chasing them off that road. We will make sure, it's our policy, that nobody is queuing on Yellowbrook Road, nobody.
Okay. And can you just talk about the hours of operations for the asphalt plant?
We're open for business seven to five. Seven in the morning and five in the evening, Monday through Friday. Saturdays, it's eight to four.
Okay. And you said, what time do you get there every day?
I'm sad, but I am there at five fifteen. And I'm not the first one, Sandy's the first one, he's there at five.
Mike, before you go on, no operations on Sunday? No hours on Sunday?
Sunday would only be on an emergency situation. It is typical for us not to work Sundays.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a quick question for you. One of my main concerns is environmental. Whenever, I've been around asphalt all my life, myself. When these trucks pull in and they park there, I know technically you're not supposed to use diesel fuel in the beds for asphalt. You know, they say not to, but every driver I know has a diesel hookup to their tank, and that's what they spray their trucks. This, is there going to be a facility that can catch that, give them a specific area to where they can do what they need to do to, you know, to their beds of their trucks?
Mr. Chairman, I know exactly what it is you're talking about, okay? We're not going to permit people oiling up their bodies on our property. We catch them doing it once, they're not going to be here, okay? They're not going to be on our property if they're oiling up on, they're going to know when they pull in this facility, there'll be no oiling up. That'll be crystal clear.
And when you say oiling up, you mean the use of diesel in the trucks?
Shooting their bodies with diesel fuel. And I know exactly what the chairman's doing. Most companies today, they would leave the site that they're at, oiled up. We're paving a parking lot, our guys clean out their trucks, they scrape them, they bang their tailgates on the job. They put the bodies down, they jump up in their body with the sprayer, as the chairman said, and they will spray down their bodies with diesel fuel. A light coat, and that's to prevent it from sticking to the body. I can't prevent them from doing it on their sites, but they will not be doing it on our site.
I know, but outside trucks that come in, they'll be pulling on, somewhere on Yellowbrook to be spraying. You know, they won't come on your site, but they'll spray off the site. I've seen it, they do it all the time.
And are you going to offer, you're going to potentially have an alternate for trucks to do that on the property?
We have a spray-down system that we're going to propose for them if they want to use it. And it's a, it's environmentally friendly product. Before they would put their order in, it's basically, you pull underneath a bar, and it'll spray the body for them. With a, you know, a product that is not bad for the environment, and they can use that as their option. I can offer it. I can give it to them for free. Will bodies come in with diesel fuel on them?
Yes.
I'm sure there will be. But we will do everything in our power to monitor that and keep it to a minimum. We will be out there like hawks.
And they, well, see, I'm not more, I'm not really concerned about your property. I'm concerned about them pulling off the shoulder of the road and then spraying their tanks on the road itself, out, off of your property. That's what my concern is.
And I understand that.
It's because they do that now.
That's against the law.
I understand, but they do it now.
If we see them doing it, we'll police it.
Okay.
We will police it.
And you are, you will be offering an alternate, free alternate service or a product that they can come in and use, once again, for free, rather than getting out and using their own diesel sprayers to come onto the property and use that, and the spray-down is a biodegradable solvent?
Yes.
Will that be shown on the plan?
It is not, but we're going to, we will provide that information.
Okay, getting back to where the trucks can park, you know, that area, is that going to be curbed in there by chance, where they're going to be parking?
We're proposing... I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. We're proposing no curbing, but I leave they will be bollards on each one of those parking stalls.
I know, but if they do come in, just the truck comes in with diesel and it's dripping, it's going to drip in there.
When you say in there, where are you thinking about?
Where the parking areas, where if the trucks are there early and they need to stage the trucks, you know, back up, park, turn their engines off. If they spray diesel on the job site and they come in there and they're just sitting there, you know, diesel's going to drip out of the body. You know, what do we...
The only thing, Mr. Chairman, and I know, I'm not disagreeing with you in the least, the only thing I can do is police that. And say, hey, your body's got diesel fuel in there, you're dripping, we have to deal with it, I'll clean it up.
Right, but I think what the chairman is suggesting is that that area be curbed so that you can control any kind of dripping that comes off a truck that's sprayed off-site.
And you might want, might even want to put concrete in there instead of asphalt.
Okay.
You know, in that area. We're just talking to that staging area, that's where I'm talking about.
I'm absolutely open for that. And that is something that if the board wants, and it's approved by the engineering, absolutely, we would do more than half of that.
Do you think that would take care of that?
Yeah, because the diesel fuel will destroy the asphalt.
I know, it's going to eat holes right through it, so, okay. Yeah, that one area where those...
Which is the parking stalls right here, right by the QC lab, absolutely.
That area, I would do curb around the island there, do curbs and just kind of collect it to where it gets there.
Absolutely.
If they do spill, you can clean it up.
Wouldn't you need some sort of a place for it to drain off?
They put a drain or something?
No, I wouldn't put a drain in there, I would let it drain to the curb, and then they'll come in, you know, with absorb and just clean it all up. Just make sure it's pitched to where it's not going to flow out. But they, you know, they, every day, they could have somebody go and just check the diesel spill.
Yeah, but where would that, to use that material, where does that go?
What, they got, to absorb, they got a fifty-five gallon drum, and it'd go in there and then it's disposed of.
Mr. Chairman? They would probably need, they'd probably need spill kits there?
Yes.
Similar to what you do if, when you pull in areas to get diesel fuel and they spill, they always have the, like the kitty litter or something to absorb, something along that line, you'd have it in that island?
Mr. Chairman, we have those spill kits on the property now.
I've seen them sitting out there.
That is correct.
So, and Mr. Reddy Alley, you have no issue, and we can work with Mr. Mallon and his team to figure out, you know, the exact parameters of putting concrete rather than asphalt or Batuminus concrete in that staging area and curbing that to catch any type of dripping, if there was going to be any, from the bed of a truck?
It'd be my pleasure to, yes.
Okay. We talked about the hours of operation, you said Monday through Friday, what were the times again?
Seven to five.
Okay, on Saturdays?
Eight to four.
Okay, typically, you don't work on Sundays unless there's an emergency?
Typically, we do not work on Sundays.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that my brother won't be out there, or Sandy won't be out there. There might be action out there, those guys, because they go there diligently seven days a week, because that's just the type of people they are. They go there. It means everything to them.
And when you say there's going to be action out there, do you mean that there's going to be asphalt being manufactured and dumped into trucks? Or are they just going to be out there on the property, working on the equipment and cleaning up and...
Working on the, working, no. Being there on the property, just surveying and making sure the place is tip-top and clean, yes.
Perfect, okay.
I got a question, you don't do any nighttime?
I was just going to ask.
Our nighttime work is based on if and when needed, or an emergency situation. We probably last year worked four or five nights. It's not something that we do regularly. We might get an emergency call for, because we have a restoration contract with New Jersey American Water Company from the Driscoll Bridge to Atlantic City. If there's a water main break and that contractor has asked us to come and support them, we will have guys come in to support them and help them. We will do that. It's not an everyday thing. As far as our company and the paving end of it on a regular basis, it's not something. We've worked two nights this year, that's it.
Captain, how about in the wintertime where it gets dark at four-thirty or whatever? You're going to have lighting there or so?
In the wintertime, depending on when we're talking about winter. If it's late December, January, February, we're not doing anything, because it's just too cold to put the material down. If it's...
Gotcha.
Okay, and you were talking about hours of operations, and you said, what are the hours of, typical hours of operation of a night shift?
Okay, if it's a job-specific and we're going... Okay, if it's a job specific and we're going to, a week and a half ago, we worked at a shopping center on Route 70. I think it was Van Devere Avenue in front of an Aldi store. We mobilized to that site, we were on that site, I believe, at 8:00 PM. And we had to mill out the front of the store, which probably took us three hours. We milled it out, then we started bringing the material in. So we would, we probably started bringing material in, I would think, by maybe 11:30, 12 o'clock. We were finished by 4:00. So I would say like 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM would be your typical nighttime job. Again, we don't do a lot of it, but that would be our window.
Right, now, my other question, you said you brought material in. That material came from Earl or off-site. But now that you'll be, if you got the approvals here to do asphalt here, you would be running that material from your plant, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then you would have a nighttime operation.
Yes.
I'm just looking at the hours of operation. I don't know if you wanna limit yourself to seven to five because whenever you start running your own material, some places you're gonna do nighttime work and that material will be coming from your plant then.
I agree, and I don't wanna limit myself to seven to five and eight to four. I wanna have the ability to be able to run nights. Is it five and six nights a week? I would think not, but when and if needed, I would absolutely wanna be able to fire up the facility.
And when you say fire up the facility, do you mean that you would be running the manufacturing plant 24 hours a day?
Absolutely not. I believe the ordinance is, with the decibel levels, we would have to shut the facility down by 10:00 PM. So there would be no facility running, manufacturing. All of the, all of the material that we would wanna be taken, we would have already manufactured and put up in the silos. So basically, we would be discharging through the night.
Now, is there vibrators on the silos?
Vibrators on the silos. You know what, Mr. Chairman, we have our professional from Aztec, she'll answer all of those questions for you. I can't answer that honestly.
Okay, Mr. Mallon, as far as SED, what is the ordinance as far as work?
Well, 10 o'clock at night, I believe, and 7:00 in the morning, or we let them go to 6:00, Matt, do you know? 7:00 o'clock, so.
Okay. Now, 10 o'clock, is there a decibel? It goes into decibel, that doesn't mean they can't work anymore.
We've gone through that bit with, yeah. And state has issued those decibels. I do have one because now that you're talking about night work, it kinda changes everything you've told us so far about your hours of operation. You know, don't take this wrong, but it's like you're talking out of one side of your mouth for one thing and the other side for the other. If you're gonna run operations, tell them, I think that's what the chairman's telling you. If you're gonna do it, tell them what you're gonna do because that's what's gonna be in your approval if you get approval. Don't say, well, we do 7:00 to 5:00, but in an emergency, the way you described it, if you get DOT working, you know that, you're gonna be working nights. And that's what you wanna know. Now, if you're gonna work nights and as you just described, the plant would run till 10 o'clock, you load your silos and then your trucks will load and go out and run the night, that's fine. Tell the board that, you understand what I'm saying? I got confused, first you told me you're only gonna work 7:00 to 5:00, 8:00 to 4:00, and all of a sudden then you say, well, nighttime, we could do this, emergencies. All I'm saying is, if you're gonna do it, tell the board, right?
And I agree, Mr. Mallon, and if I misguided the board or Mr. Mallon or anybody else in this room, that was not my intentions. When I was asked the normal hours of operation, that's our normal operation, 7:00 to 5:00. But if it's best for us to protect us by saying, and we also wanna work nights, I also wanna work nights as well. Within all of the parameters of decibel levels and all of that, we will meet all of that, it's governed by that, the state.
But you're saying 7:00 to 10:00 then?
Well, no, not necessarily, 'cause they can, the operation can go 24/7, but...
For the noise levels, 7:00 to 10:00?
Noise levels, they have to be controlled from 7:00 to 10:00.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
This product has to be heated, I assume, I don't know anything about it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mar Mahler, could you talk in the mic, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. In those silos, when do you start heating them so that you can let the product? You know, the customer wants it hot, I assume?
They are heated silos, but, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I'm gonna let our professional give you all of that information for the facility 'cause she has much more knowledge of it than I do.
Okay, fine, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Butler?
Mr. Chairman, I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Now, we're talking night paving. Your trucks have backup alarms. Do you, do you use strobe lights instead of backup that they can turn them off? 'Cause if you're gonna be running in the middle of the night, believe me, that sound's gonna travel like crazy. You've got residences not directly next to you, but a distance, they'll hear it. Do you have, do you have strobe lights on your vehicles to be able to do that?
Mr. Mallon, we are prepared to put the strobe lights. We are prepared to make sure that every vehicle has a strobe light, every backup beeper is switched off and turned on to a strobe light. The trucks will have mufflers. And any resident that has a problem with us, they'll have my cell number and Sandy McIntyre's cell number, and they can call me. If there's a problem, we'll take care of it, but we will have strobe lights, absolutely.
And are you gonna enforce no banging of the tailgates for a truck?
We will be enforcing that with ourselves in-house.
Okay, now, let's go to another question. I know we don't have the jurisdiction on the recycling. Now, is that, that gonna be a 24/7 or how's the operation on the recycling gonna go?
The recycling will not be 24 hours a day. The recycling, if we wanna talk about that a little bit, typically, well, inbound material during the day, and that could be concrete, it could be crushed asphalt, it could be chunks of asphalt, it could be millings. That's typically during the day hours.
What if the state is doing, let's say 33, Route 33, and they're milling at night? 'Cause most of the state work is at night. If they're milling and they need a place to bring that material, is it, is it gonna be accepted there at night? Or are they gonna have to load and just wait till the day?
Well, for this assumption, we got the job on 33 or they're looking to purchase material from us for 33 and to dump for us for 33. So if it's, we don't have the job, but Tom Smith Paving has the job, and they come to us, our price would have to be fair for them, number one, if there's no guarantee, we would even get the job as far as the sale of the material and the dumping. But yes, that, those millings would be coming to us, that we have a special...
That would be normally at nighttime, though.
That would be at night. And we have the decibel levels for tires, and we have a professional that will give you that information. But they will be coming in down Yellowbrook Road and entering the northern side of the entrance. They won't be going down to Cranberry Road, 'cause we have a nighttime circulation pattern for after-hours because of the decibel level. So what you would do is you would come in the northern entrance, which would be the LNL entrance, and come straight in and cross those scales that are on that side of the property. So they would come in there and then they would make a left. And then those piles, the recycling pile is right there on their right hand. So they would dump their millings there. Now, by those scales, because the residents, even though we own it, we're going to build a 10-foot wall there, sound barrier wall, to keep that noise down for that resident. And then the circulation pattern comes in and then it runs parallel with Yellowbrook Road, but down the middle of the property. And then they would come in, make a right to get loaded with material if they were gonna pull material back out, and then loop around the far back end of the property, looping around and coming back out that same entrance, which is the northerly entrance, keeping it as far away of Cranberry Road and those residents as possible. And then they would exit going down Yellowbrook Road.
And you will have somebody there to monitor the tailgates?
Absolutely. And I'll have our cell number, my cell number, Sandy's cell number, anybody who complains, they can call us.
And part of the recycling is running of, running of, I don't know the correct term, but crushers, so something that's gonna break up the material. Those are not gonna be running at night, are they?
They will not be running at night, it's typically not a five or six-day-a-week operation because you typically wanna bring in a certain amount of material first and then crush it. So let's say you bring in material for two weeks. Two weeks' worth of material potentially could be just two days of crushing. So we would start the crusher, crush for that window of the normal business hour, 7:00 to 5:00. Then, once the material's crushed, it's moved from one side to the other side, that crusher is shut down. It may not run for two or three weeks, I don't know that, I don't know that.
Are you gonna use conveyors to transfer the material from one side to the other?
Mr. Chairman, we are absolutely gonna use conveyors, I just don't think we could afford doing it right now.
Okay, so it would be loaders?
It will be loaders.
So since we're talking about the recycling, let's talk a little bit, 'cause I know Mr. Mallon had a question regarding the height of the recycling piles out there. Is there a limit to the height of the recycling piles?
As far as I know, Mr. Mallon, the height limit is 35 feet. We have telephone poles out there now at that 35-foot height. So we're monitoring it now, especially when we got our limited, because we were crushing all of that pipe that was in the ground. We had a pretty significant-sized pile, so we knew, or Sandy McIntyre knew that there's height requirements and, you know, we put the telephone poles up, we put the bucket on top, so we can see that we didn't get higher than 35 feet. So it is governed by the state on how high those piles can be, and they will not exceed the height that's required.
Okay, and is the material that's being recycled, is that gonna be used in the, for the petuminous concrete plant?
The recycled material, as far as the chunks of asphalt, they'll be processed down to size. And the millings, yes, that'll be all going into the manufacturing of the new, the new product that we're gonna be doing there, the new asphalt.
And then you'll just sell the R blend, correct?
That is correct, which the R blend is the recycled concrete, which comes in, it's crushed, and we use it as a DGA, a dense grade of aggregate, subbase material. It'll be approved by the state, so we get it certified every, I think it's every three or four months, it comes in and gets certified, it's a good product.
Okay, and just to back up a little bit, how many employees will be on the property during operations?
If the facility is approved, I believe all in, it's gonna be 55, all in.
And it's 55 employees whether you're there working during the day or they're working during the night?
I'm sorry, it's not 55 employees for the facility, it's for the whole operation, our paving company and what we do every day right now. That 55 encompasses the facility as well. There'll be five of those 55 designated just for the facility.
So five people are gonna do all the operations of producing the asphalt?
Yes, sir.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
And since we, you were talking about how your material, some of your material's gonna go from your recycling piles over to be used into the plant, and you're gonna have other materials that are also gonna be used in the plant, are they stored in bins?
Yes, those bins are north of the facility, and they look like little cubes. There's one, two, three, four, I think there's six of them there. Yeah, six cubes. That's for the storage of the material to put into the facility, will be in those bins. And those bins are 50 by 50. I believe the walls are 12-foot, bin block walls all the way around, and the tops of those piles will be at no more than 20 feet high.
And then the material from those bins is moved over onto conveyor belts into the petuminous plant?
Well, they're bucketed in from, from those storage bins, the front-end loader will pick up a bucket and put it into the cold-feed bins, which are, I guess it would be considered behind those bins. So the loader would go in, scoop up a pile of whatever aggregate, and put it in one of those cold-feed bins. Each one of those cold-feed bins will potentially have a different raw material, it could have 3/8 stone, it could have 3/4 inch stone, it could have sand, it could have stone dust, fines, quarter-inch stone. The other two will have the recycled material in it. So all that loader does is just scoop up and put it in those cold-feed bins, that's all it does.
Okay, and then from those, from those, from those bins, it goes over into the plant and is made into the product? And we have Ms. Sutton who'll come up later and give you a better, give the board a better idea of how that, that procedure's done. And then what happens to the materials efforts made through the plant?
It is, so it exits the drum and goes on, goes up to the elevator, which the elevator is a large, basically enclosed, heated conveyor belt. And that material will be elevated up into the silos, and depending on what product it's at that point putting in, it'll, it'll move that product into that specific silo and fill that silo up. And once that silo's filled with that product, that's it, no more into that silo.
Okay, can you explain to the board what you mean by specific products? Are there different types of petuminous concrete products that you would need for a different type of job?
Yes, there's a number of products. Typically, there's the finished surface course, which is, it could be the superpave top, it could be the I-5 top, and it could be the driveway mix top, it has the smaller aggregate, depending on the mix design, a little bit more sand. Then it has, then you have your base course, superpave base, your regular I-2 base. And then because this facility can do a high percentage of rap recycled material, we wanna have a higher rap product as well. We wanna be able to go 50 to 60% recycled material in our mixes. That's what we wanna do, we think it's a wonderful opportunity for us not have to be purchasing a lot of the raw material, the stone, the sand, because we don't own the quarries, we have to purchase that material. If we have the ability to get in this recycled material, the asphalt and the millings, and crush that and size that and use most of that into our mix, we now can control what we purchase instead of having to go out and search and buy the raw material. So with taking that rap, we can provide another product doing 50% rap in the surface course and 50% rap in the base course. It gives us that ability, and those refer jobs that aren't regulated by the county or the state. They're Mrs. Jones's driveway, they're my driveway, Mr. Chairman, it's your driveway, it's a parking lot that we did the other night at Aldi. We could use a higher rap, a higher recycled product in that because it's not regulated by the state. We still have to stand behind it and warranty it as the installer. So if it failed for some reason, we'd have to take it out at our own expense and put it back in. But it gives us the ability to have with these silos potentially six different mixes at once if we had to.
With concrete, they usually take a core sample and run it through tests to see if it meets a certain requirement. Is there such a requirement for these asphalt products?
There absolutely is, and on this property, we're proposing a QC lab, a quality control lab. And what they do there is, if we're mixing, let's just say, our 50% rap surface course, we have our QC lab, he goes out there and takes the mix, takes the mix design and brings it into QC lab, and he runs it through the tests. Whatever those tests are, I couldn't speak honestly about it, I know they check for density, compaction, make sure there's enough oil in it, so it's not gonna fail. If you're doing a state project, the state will come out and go to your QC lab and say, let me see the mix that you're bringing over to Route 70. So they'll do all of that in that QC lab.
And you're gonna have that on-site?
Yes, sir, we're proposing that.
And that QC lab was in the area that we were talking about before where we're gonna, you are gonna change the asphalt to a concrete paving and curbing. It's in that area, so just so the board understands where that, where the QC lab is.
That is correct, that is in that same area, and in that area, and that's, that building is the QC lab. We're gonna have a bathroom in that same area, so if a trucker wants to park and shut his truck down and needs to go to the bathroom, we're gonna provide him with a bathroom, we're gonna have vending machines in there, so if they, they're gonna be sitting for an hour, they can at least get themselves something to drink, maybe a little snack, go to the... go to the bathroom, and then they can go about their day.
Okay. Going back to the plant, the manufacturing plant, generally, do you know that, is there any portion of the plant that is above the 45-foot height limit in the SED zone?
The silos are higher. The elevator that brings the material to the top of the silos, I believe it's 90 feet and 7 inches. And then, the asphalt cement tanks, they're below the 45 feet, but when you put the safety guardrail on top of it, it's at 47 feet. So, technically, that's 47 feet, and the top of the silos and the elevator is 90 feet, 7 inches.
Okay. And we talked before, you're going to use a portion of the materials that are recycled on-site back into the, into the, and use them to manufacture the Batuminus Concrete. But there's also going to be deliveries of certain materials to the site. Can you just tell the board what would be delivered to the site and the frequency of those deliveries?
As far as the manufacturing facility, the raw materials will be, as I said earlier, it's going to be stone, and there's a couple of different-sized aggregates that we're going to be having to get, quarter-inch, 3/8, 3/4. We're going to be getting sand. We're going to be getting stone dust. And then, the other side is going to be just the rap material, the millings that are going to be coming in from the other side of the property. And then, we're going to get deliveries of AC oil, the cement, and that's a tractor trailer, I believe it's a 45-foot tractor trailer, that will come in and pull up in front of the AC tanks and just, you know, load from its trailer into the AC tank.
Now, would that be your own truck or outside company?
Initially, Mr. Chairman, it's going to be an outside, because I honestly don't know how much material we're going to sell. I mean, the reality for us is that we ran a business plan. Well, how many tons do you think you can sell? We did that plan. We buy 40,000 to 50,000 tons a year. You know, so we said, okay, well, you know, maybe we can sell 150,000 to 200,000 tons a year. Maybe that's our number. Okay, let's paint our picture, our business plan, on 200,000 tons of sale. Well, what does that equate? If we're doing 200,000 tons, and let's say that's three years from now, because I don't, I mean, it's a fantasy to think it's going to be year one or year two. We're going to have to grow this. This is going to be a process to get people to come. But at that point, for 200,000 tons a year, that would equate to probably two loads of that AC oil, one in the morning and one in midday. And it's basically, he pulls in, he unloads, and he leaves. We may not see him until the next time we need another tanker.
And that AC oil, you said is delivered to a tank that's an above-ground tank?
It is an above-ground holding tank. It's basically like having an oil tank or diesel fuel tank, I'm sorry. It's double, two-plyed, it's two thicknesses thick, and then has a containment wall. Again, Catherine's here, she's going to give you a much better picture of exactly thicknesses and all of that stuff for the facility.
And getting back to your operation, are you going to have, do you have fuel tanks on-site?
Mr. Chairman, we have fuel tanks on the site. They were part of our minor site plan approval, so they're on there, and they've been approved.
Okay. If you could, for the Batuminus Concrete Plant, is there, there's a control building. Can you explain to the board what the control building is?
Okay. The control building is, if you all know what I'm talking about, with the silos, if you go underneath the silos, the control building is just to the right of it. And what's in there is basically the gentleman who runs the whole facility as far as the asphalt plant. It's done computers now, okay? So, he basically is sitting up in that warehouse, and let's just say, you know, Mr. Chairman's coming in to get a load of material, so he'll come up to the, he'll put his order in, and then he'll pull into the silo, and the gentleman that's going to be in that, in that control center, he's going to say, "Okay, Mr. Chairman, I know you want 20 ton of base," and he's going to push the button, and it's going to come out of that silo. Now, all of these, oh, I'm sorry. So, once he loads them, he will leave that, underneath that silo, get his ticket and leave. It's all run from that control center, including all of those cold feed bins. What I was telling you before, where the loader operator basically just makes sure that all of those cold feed bins are full, the gentleman that's going to be in that QC lab, he's the one who's going to be saying, "How much aggregate is going to come out of this cold feed? How much rap is going to go?" Because he's controlling the mix design from that control center. That, it's all computers now. That's what it is.
Okay. And we talked a little bit about trucks, how if there, there's, there will be no queuing on Yellowbrook Road, they can pull into the site. How many trucks do you foresee per day entering the facility?
Are you talking about with the recycling and the manufacturing?
Yes.
Okay. We based our plan of the 200,000 tons at 90 trucks a day. Now, I can tell you, it probably seems like a lot, but some of those 90 are actually coming in with, from a job that we were milling or somebody's milling. So, that one truck would come in with the millings, come in the recycling side, dump over there, and then get in line to get loaded with material. So, that's one truck with both loads. And I'm pretty sure prior to us owning this piece of property, when this facility was running as a concrete pipe headwall plant, they had tractor trailers. This is, this is very typical and traditional, what's been going on there since the 50s. We're not doing anything different than what was there prior to us.
And what time will the trucks begin arriving on the property?
We're open for business from 7 to 5. Am I going to lie and say that there might not be, a truck might come at 6:30 and park in the spot and shut his truck down? Probably going to happen, and we're going to, we may have to have a conversation with them. Hey, you know, you want to come here? We're open for business at 7. If you want to get here early, go down to Wawa, Quick Check, and get yourself a coffee. We'll be here at 7.
But if they want to pull off the, off Yellowbrook Road, and they can come in and they can pull and park and shut their trucks down?
They absolutely have the ability to pull in and park and shut the truck down, for sure. There'll be nobody hanging on Yellowbrook Road.
Okay. And you said, generally, circulation, they come in off that, the main driveway off of Yellowbrook Road, circulate through, this is during the day, circulate through, pick up, and then leave the facility going either north or south on Yellowbrook Road, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And recycling, where do they come in?
Recycling, they come in the northern entrance. They weigh in, they go drive over the scale, they dump whatever product they have. If they're picking up that product but recycled, if they're dumping concrete and they're picking up a crushed concrete or recycled material, in that same area, they'll just pull over to the other side, and the truck will be loaded, and then they'll exit the far end of the property, coming back out on the other scale and exiting on the northern entrance, the northern side of the property, going on Yellowbrook Road, north and south.
And you said before that if there were to be nighttime operations on the property, the circulation of the traffic is going to change?
Yes, the traffic's going to change at night.
Can you just run the board, just again, really quick, run the board through that circulation pattern?
They're going to come in the northerly side, they're going to come up to the second left-hand turn, they're going to make a left, they're going to run parallel with Yellowbrook Road, then they're going to make a right. They're going to get whatever product they're there to get, they're going to get loaded, they're going to go out the far end of the property, behind all of the recycling, and come down the northerly side, coming out the northerly entrance, and then exiting on Yellowbrook Road.
Okay. We talked a lot, so we haven't talked yet about this story. Talk quickly about the storage building. Can you just give the board some information regarding the storage building?
The portion of the existing manufacturing plant that we're leaving?
Yes.
Okay. We're basically going to tear down the existing concrete plant. We're hoping that we can salvage something from it. Maybe the conveyor belt, maybe one of the cold feed bins, maybe a silo, something. But the rest of it's going to have to come down because it's in really bad shape. The portion of the building that we're proposing to leave is concrete, and it's in pretty good shape. You know, it needs a little TLC, but we think with the new roof closing in the one side, we'll be able to make good use out of it to store stuff. The equipment that we don't use on a regular basis going into the winter time, if we want to take some of the stuff that we don't use all the time and put it in there, so it's not in the weather, it's not in the rain, it's not in the snow. And then, excess products as far as, you know, excess tires if we need tires, just your normal wear and tear stuff in a contracting business that you may need to keep. It just gives us the ability to have another place where we could put stuff in and be out of the weather.
Would you be doing any, with your trucks, would you be doing any maintenance outside of replacing tires, any oil changing, repairing of the truck?
We do that now, sir, in the main building. That was part of our minor site plan. We have our waste oil tanks in there, we have, that's where we have all of our cleanups if there's a spill. We do all of that right now in the existing building that's there.
And that building is remaining on the property?
That building is remaining.
And you're going to continue to use it in that fashion?
We will be continuing using that exact same fashion.
And what about the office, the one that's there right now? Are you changing the use of that building or changing anything to that building?
We are not changing that building at all. It is going to be used for the exact same use it's being right now.
Okay. And you mentioned earlier an office trailer. Can you just generally talk about the office trailer, the size of it? I know you said it's going to be out there for maybe five years.
The proposed office trailer is 1,344 square feet. Quite honestly, we just need more office space. It's very, very tight in the existing office that we have now. You know, I know you can't just put an office trailer out there, you have to go through the process, and that's why we're doing it this way. But God willing, we're looking that this is going to be, our next phase is going to build our office building on the other piece of property. I'm hoping in five years that that is the situation where we can move out of this and tear that old building down and just turn all that into grass and build our new office building.
On these night operations, how can we be reassured that there's not going to be light spillage into the neighborhood that would be objectionable, from truck lights turning and, or the operation lights, like you get the glow in the sky?
I have an engineer that will speak on that. I know it's pretty regulated as far as what the state allows, but again, if it's something where somebody's upset because the lights are on, they can come and see me, I'm there every morning at 5:30 and say, "Hey, can you do something about the lights? Turn them down, do something else?" But what we're proposing has to be approved by the board, and it has to meet all of the needs.
Mr. Amara, I just, I'm going to-
Go ahead.
-make a statement right directly. Anywhere the lights are going to be shining, there's no residents. You've got a concrete plant across the street, you've got George Harms, you've got, you know, there's really no residences around this.
Yeah. And you beat me to it again, so the one entrance empties out onto Yellowbrook Road, and what's across the street from there, Mr. Reddy Alley?
Eastern Concrete.
And across from the other entrance and exit road?
Stavola?
It's Cranberry Road.
Stavola Materials? Right across the street, is that what you're talking about?
No, no, no. The entrance and exit, from, the main entrance and exit from the property, what's across the street?
Oh, this is Eastern Concrete, it's right here. And there's a, there's-
Cranberry Road.
Is there a road there?
This road right here?
Yep.
Cranberry Road.
Okay.
Yes. You want to know what's there right now?
Yes.
Well, Stavola owns this whole property, runs along to Cranberry Road, but then there's a house on that side, and there's another house on this side.
Okay. Going back to the temporary trailer, is that going to be on piers or footings?
No, the company that comes out, they just make sure it's leveled and balanced. They set it up with cinder blocks to make sure that the unit is level.
Is there odors connected with this operation that are, would be considered objectionable?
Odor is subjective, as far as what you think may smell. I may not smell it, and I would probably have to tell you-
I probably wouldn't smell anything, but-
And I probably wouldn't smell this, but I can't speak for somebody who says I can smell it all the time. What I can tell you is, is that from what I know-
Right.
-what's been going on in that area, if nobody was complaining about smells and odors last year, they're not going to smell us and complain about us. There are products that you can add to diffuse the smell, but I'm not sure that that smell is worse than what they might think is a bad smell. I can't speak for what somebody might think smells. I just can't.
Yeah, but normally, if one was to go to an asphalt plant, could you walk by the plant and not say, "Oh, my God, I can't stand this"? Just, is it, is it to that level?
Here's an example.
I know it's subjective.
And yes, somebody who doesn't deal with the stuff on a regular basis, absolutely. When we owned a piece of property in Titten Falls on Shafto Road, it was literally across from the main entrance, Monmouth County landfill, okay?
Yeah, I'm familiar with the area.
Right across. Okay? So, we were there for 10-plus years. After two years, I didn't smell the dump. People would come and go, "I can't believe the smell."
Yeah, but your nose gets used to it.
That's my point. That's my point. So, somebody driving by, or for the first time, it might be like, "Wow, it really smells." What can I tell you it smells like? It smells like oil to me, but it's not offensive. And anybody who was, would say they would be smelling it, I don't know where they would live. I don't know how far it would travel for that.
In my hometown, it was Fisk Tire and Rubber Company. And if you, anybody that worked there, if they walked by you, you'd say, "My God, you stink." Now, the plant itself had an odor, but the residents, as you say, get used to it, they don't even know it's there.
Right. And there are additives that can be put into the mix that would cut down the odor or change the odor?
Yes. And there's also an existing facility there that ran last year for a few months, and I don't know if anybody's complaining about that smell. I don't know that. I can't speak for that.
I guess, maybe a better question, if I could just cut through the smell conversation, is, are you introducing an odor into the area that is not currently there or would be atypical for an industrial area of this nature?
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
My other, my other point would be is how many feet, or how many feet is a plant off of the roadway back, it's set way off, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and-
I'm drawing a complete blank right now. I had it memorized. I knew I was going to forget something. Maybe Mr. Kennedy can give you that answer? I mean, if I took a second, I could probably figure it out.
We're, I'm being told it's approximately 900 feet.
900 feet off of Yellowbrook Road. Yeah, that's a long way.
Behind the four, the six-foot berms with 14-foot, six to eight-foot trees on top of them.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. If we could just go back real quick to the control center, do you know the height of that control center, the control building?
I believe it's at 20 feet or 19 and change.
And underneath that, is it, what is it, the controls all on one floor, and then there's, is there anything underneath on that, below the control?
It's basically the brains of the computers upstairs, but Catherine is here from Attic, she will give you all of that information.
You said that there was 50 employees involved. Five run the plant. What do the rest of the 45 do?
Those are our day-to-day operation employees. We go out and do paving work every day.
Oh, so you run, okay.
Yes, sir.
I thought you just run the plant, but you actually go out and field-
No, our business is there too, of-
Oh, okay.
Of, that's where we park all of our equipment now, and our employees come in and park and go to work.
And let's just go back real quick. Employees that are coming to the property, where are they parking?
The employees park, come in on the northerly side, they make the first left, and then their first right, and that parking lot is for the employee parking. That's where the employees will be parking.
And what time do they come to the site?
They're typically arriving, I would say it's 6:30 in the morning to pull in, then park their car. They have to come in, they have to do their inspection of their vehicle, because we like them to be pulling out by 7:15-ish, 7:30-ish. So, they have to do their trip report, you know, walk around the truck, kick the tires, make sure the lights are working, the whole thing there.
And how do you handle, and how do you, now, and how do you propose to handle garbage that is generated from the site, garbage and recycling?
Part of our minor site plan was we have a dumpster with a dumpster pad enclosed, so that's pre-existing on the site now.
Can you just talk about the, I don't think we've touched on this yet, can you talk about the landscaping and what you're, just generally, because I know we're going to have other witnesses come and talk about it in more specific, but if you could talk about generally the landscaping for the property?
It'll be very general. There's, we're turning 11 acres, I believe, of pavement and solid surface into grass It'll be very general. There's, we're turning 11 acres, I believe, of pavement and solid surface into grass and lawn, and we're putting in a long-running parallel with Shafto- I'm so sorry. Yellowbrook Road, we're putting those berms in. The berms are six-foot high, and we're proposing, I think it's seven or eight-foot evergreens on top of them. I believe it's 270 trees we're planting.
Is that landscaping irrigated? I mean, I know Mr. Kennedy's here, so I'm assuming that that's something that you're going to talk about, Jim?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just figured you could just write that down. Thanks.
Mr. Butler?
Yeah.
Don't mean to kind of rush you.
Yeah, no, I'm-
I think we need to get Catherine up.
I'm actually done. I don't have any further questions for Mr. Reddy.
Mr. Nancy, can I just ask one question?
Yes, sir.
You did very, very briefly mention a 10-foot-high sound wall, and I'm kind of curious where that's going, and how far off the lot line it's going to be, and how long it is, and those types of things?
I'm going to let Mr. Kennedy explain, but it's on the northernly side of the property, on that entrance where we're proposing the two scales. That's where the wall is going to be.
I just don't see it on the plan itself. I can wait until he gets up. That's fine.
We'll have Mr. Kennedy clarify the exact location.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Is there going to be any signs?
Signs as far as-
Your company.
There's an existing sign out there right now. We're going to stay in that same footprint.
Now, you were also talking about the way the trucks are going to travel. Some are going to be from the main entrance and from the north. Who's going to be directing all that traffic?
Well, they'll be, they'll- Sandy McIntyre will be on the site, okay, but we're going to be, initially, it's probably going to be a little bit confusing, because it's going to be our first go at it and their first go of coming. But we're going to have them know that this is the side for the recycling side. How we're going to do that?
Can you put signs up all over the place?
I'm sure we could put interior signs everywhere for where they're supposed to go. But again, it's going to be based on, it has to be approved by the board on how they go and where they go and the size. I mean, for me, right now, I just know it, that's why. I can see in the future that we're going to have to explain that, that that's where the recycling side goes, and this is the main entrance for the facility. And we would do that with signs.
Right now, you said you go to Monmouth County, other places, Ocean County, to pick up material. You said that in the beginning of-
I don't go to Monmouth County. The one supplier in Monmouth County does not sell to us. I go to Middlesex County.
Excuse me, Middlesex County and Ocean County. How many runs do you do a day for, to pick up material?
It's all job, size of the job and what we're doing. An example is, last week, we paved the street in West Long Branch, which is in Monmouth County. It's over by the racetrack. And we had to mill the street and take those millings, and we had to drive to Earl Asphalt in Jackson, okay? On the Parkway, on a Monday. Hour and 40 minutes before that truck came back to the job. If I would have went to one of the suppliers that has a place in Titten Falls, 30-minute round trip. So, it's all job-related. If it's a job that typically we think we can get done in five hours, it now takes us probably seven hours, and we hire four more trucks and have our guys come in an hour earlier, because they have to leave our yard in Howell to go to Jackson or go to Middlesex to come back to Monmouth County.
So then the recycling will cut that down or eliminate those travels to Ocean and Middlesex County?
God willing, that's exactly our plan. But when I'm really south, it's not logical for me to come all the way back to Howell.
Yeah.
I would want to buy material from the supplier in that area. I mean, that's just, I think, smart business.
But it will be a cut down of traffic once that operation-
Yes.
Gets going? Okay. Thank you.
Does the material stay hot enough over those long trips? I don't know anything about the paving business, but I assume it has to be a certain temperature in order to be able to be workable.
It's difficult, but yes, but it has changed quite a bit for us because of the travel.
Yeah, because the quality of the product that you're putting down changes over time. I mean-
You're absolutely right. I'm not happy about it, but what can I do? They don't sell to me.
All right. I'm not sure, did anyone else on the board have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
I think that does it. The board's going to take a 10-minute recess, and we'll reconvene at 9:20.
The zoning board will now reconvene?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We're going to move on to our next witness.
What happened to Mr. Gazereski?
Uh, I don't know, he may be in the loop.
Keep going.
I'd like to move on to my next witness, Catherine Sutton of Aztec. She was already sworn in. And she's here tonight to give an overview of the manufacturing process and the混凝土 concrete plant that's going to be on this property.
Okay. Ron, do we need to qualify her, or who she's with, or?
I'll let Mike do that. If she has any special qualifications, what her training experiences and so forth, please.
Sure. Ms. Sutton, if you could, just put your name on the record again and your qualifications, who you work for, what your job position is with that company.
All right. My name is Catherine Sutton Shout. I'm the Director of Environmental Compliance for Aztec Incorporated, a division of Aztec Industries located in Chattanooga, Tennessee. I've been with the company for over 21 years, almost 21 and a half years. Since 2001, I have basically devoted my career to environmental issues. I'm over all of the environmental control equipment. I prepare emission calculations. I testify at boards such as this. I go to air permit hearings, providing equipment, information about how it works, what kind of emissions you're going to expect from it, that sort of thing.
We accept that. Mr. Gazereski, you have any objections?
Not at all.
Okay, Ms. Sutton Shout, I apologize. I keep forgetting to add the last part of your last name.
No worries.
If you could just give the board a run-through of the operations of the plant that's proposed.
What I, I believe every one of you have been given this folder, and what I plan to do is walk you through the process of how we would make paving mixtures by using our equipment. And then the further pages show comparable equipment. Obviously, we've not built anything yet for L&amp;L paving. Can't do that. But what I've done is I've given you pictures of comparable equipment, so you can kind of tell what it's going to look like.
Before you start, just for the record, we're marking into evidence as A24, the handout.
A25, Mike.
Oh, A25?
Sorry.
Sorry. A20, hold on one second. A25, those prepared by Ms. Sutton Shout-
Yes, sir.
From Aztec.
Were there ever set up architectural plans submitted to the board, showing all the specifications of the plant itself?
Mr. Butler?
Plans of the plant were presented to the board, yes, they were submitted.
Sir?
Yes, plans were submitted, of the plant were submitted with the application.
Okay.
I don't believe they were here the last time. Are they in?
They were marked into evidence as A6, A7.
Okay.
Yeah, they've been submitted all along.
Thank you.
Mr. Butler?
Um, thank you. That was A25?
A25.
Yes, sir.
I chose to put this document together, because I thought it'd be easier than trying to do a PowerPoint to show you our equipment, and this way we get the ability to just walk our way through the equipment, as though we're making mix, okay? So we're going to start out on this front page, right here. Just the very first one you see. And in the upper-left corner, those are your cold feed bins. So we're going to be starting at that point, and we're going to be walking our way through the equipment. I will, I will start up here just so you can see the path of the equipment, if you don't mind. I've got a big mouth, but-
I'm used to using a mic too, so here we go. Cold feed bins, right up here. Material is going to be fed onto conveyors and then transported to the drum mixer, which is also the drying apparatus, and we'll talk about that when we get to it. Dried material will drop out into a Twin Chef mixer, where we actually add the liquid and make the paving mixtures themselves. Finished mix will drop into a drag conveyor. That is what's actually going to convey the finished paving mixtures to the top of the silos, which, as Mr. Adeli indicated, are down in this lower portion, right down here. But we've got some other equipment I want to draw your attention to. This, this piece of equipment right here, that's adjacent to the drum and the conveyors, is a baghouse. This is the air pollution control equipment on the site. You also have recycle bins that will allow us to feed the recycled material into the drum itself. And then you've got a tank farm area right here that's going to contain the asphalt cement storage tanks, also the heater, and a green system. And we'll explain what all those are as well. Right up here, there's another little building, if you will. That's our motor control center. That's just going to house all the switchgear that allows us to turn the motors on and off.
That's separate than the control, correct?
Yes, it is. So, as we flip through, on this first page, we have cold feed bin system. Now, the picture that I've shown, unfortunately, had seven bins. That was, that was my error in the picture that I gave. The proposed plan is only going to have actually six bins. At most, you'll be feeding material out of three to four bins. Very rarely, if ever, have I seen a customer ever feed material out of all six bins simultaneously. That's just not the way equipment works. But they need the ability to store the different sizes based on the job mix formula for the different mixes that they need to be able to produce. So this is just to give them the ability to have different gradations.
And this is all computer-controlled, correct?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And let me, let me address that. Once they determine a job mix formula, and this is going to happen, the lab personnel will determine what the ratios need to be. They need so much of this size aggregate, so much of these fines, so much of this liquid, so much of this recycle. All of that material is fed into the computers. So when a truck comes on site and says, hey, I need X tons of this mix, they can punch it in the computer, and the computer is going to make the changeover. And it will, it will turn off bins, and it will turn on other bins, and it's all on timers even, so that there's no interruption in mix production. You simply switch from one mix to the other, and you swap which silo it's going into, so that there's no contamination.
Now, the swap, that's computer-controlled also?
Yes, it is. The, what happens in our controls is the operator will tell the computer, I need to make, say, 500 tons of this mix. So if they don't need to switch to another mix after those 500 tons, they simply shut the plant down. But if they need to then swap and make, say, 300 tons of another mix, they simply tell it, oh, once you reach 500, go to 300 of this other. And it ramps down certain bins as needed or speeds them up, and it simply switches over. It's all on timers.
Is there a residue, if you're running a certain mix, and then you have to go to another mix? In the conveyor system, is there a certain amount of residue from the last one, and what do you do with that?
No, because that's where the timers, the timers come in. Is, is we know when there's, the end of this one mix should be reaching a certain point of the equipment. Now, to ensure mix quality, we've got, we've got some customers that there's a dropout gate on the drag, where they can actually feed into a, just a work truck that they keep on the side, or right into a loader bucket, where they, they take that, that mix that may be in between, just on the side. They go put that on the recycle pile, because they can reuse that.
So there is a way of getting to that?
There is a way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So each one of these cold feed bins has a feeder, which is a belt feeder located below the material, and those are variable frequency drives, so that we are feeding the material at a known rate out of those bins. And it drops onto a collected conveyor, so it sums all these mixes, and then it transports it next, and we'll flip onto the next page, onto the conveyor that first takes it to a scalping screen. Now, this is an important piece of equipment, because it's going to take any oversized material or trash that maybe has inadvertently got into the bins. It's going to remove that from the feed material, so it doesn't get in the drum. So most of the time, it's going to be discharged off to the side, little bobcat, something. Hey, I've seen people that there's literally just a person out there shoveling. Everybody's hands are a little bit different, because it's not an overly large amount of material that ever gets rejected from the, from the screens. That's just to control what goes into the drum. Okay? So once you've got the material past the scalping screen, it then goes on to another belt, and then this belt has a weigh bridge on it. So what we're doing at this point is we are literally weighing how much material is passing over that scale, and we're using that weight in addition to the belt speed to determine how much material is actually being fed in the drum. Now, part of what the job requires is that we know moistures. So this is where the quality control lab fellows come into play. They will have already checked moistures, and they need to do it on a regular basis, and good companies do that. Because we type in how much each one of those aggregates, how much moisture is in that. Because what we're going to do, once we get in the drum, we're going to dry all that moisture off. So we need to know how much dry aggregate we're ultimately going to end up with, so we can tell how much liquid's going into it. So this is a very important piece of equipment, so we know what's being fed in. So moving along, we get the aggregate all the way up to the double barrel, dryer drum mixer. And this is a proprietary drum design manufactured by our company. I'm going to tell you some of the characteristics that makes it a little bit different. First, it's a drum within a drum. And so you have a big rotating inner cylinder. So the material comes in at the upper end, it's wet, and as it starts moving through the drum, hot gases from the burner located on the lower end of the drum are pulled through the drum. So those hot gases are in turn heating and drying those aggregates.
How do you generate that hot air, from oil?
It's a burner, and this one is going to be fired on natural gas. All of those gases that are exiting the drum have the potential to take some of the fines, that's dust, out of the drum. But we can't just let that go in the atmosphere, so that's when the baghouse comes into play. We funnel all of the gases 100 percent. This whole system is under negative pressure at all times that it's operating. Never at any time when it's operating can any material get out of the drum that does not pass through the baghouse. That's, the baghouse has an exhaust van, that all this equipment is interlocked, so you can't start certain pieces of equipment without other pieces of equipment also running. The drum is interlocked with the baghouse. You cannot run the burner, you cannot run the drum, you cannot run most of the conveyors without the baghouse running, and that's to prevent any pollution from getting out of the equipment. So over in the baghouse, we're removing all of this particulate matter from the gas stream, because that, those small dust particles, they're an important part of the mix. So what happens is we take it out of the gas stream, we collect it in the bottom of the baghouse, and it has a hopper screw that we transport it back out, and we convey it right back over to the drum, and we put it in. But now, it goes in into the outer mixing chamber, okay? Now, the important thing about this setup is normally on our double barrels, we're adding the liquid into the outer mixing chamber, but that's not what's going to happen at L&amp;L. One of our recent advancements, we've been doing it probably about three, four years now, is we only use the double barrel for drying. And the benefit is, we can put more recycle through it without increasing emission rates. So what's going to happen is we dry the virgin materials inside the inner rotating drum. When it gets to the lower end of the drum, there are holes in that shell that allow the material to drop out into the outer- material to drop out into the outer mixing chamber. Inside of this mixing chamber, we have paddles that are firmly attached to the outside edge of the inner rotating drum. So, these paddles are on an angle, so that's going to start conveying that material back upstream. Well, in this case, what we do is we bring the recycle in and we start taking the wet recycle, which is going to have a moisture content somewhere around 5%, and we mix it, start pre-mixing it with this hot aggregate. And the temperature we get the aggregate up to really kind of depends on how much moisture we're dealing with and how much recycle we're using. So, once you start that blending, then we bring the dust back over from the bag house and we start blending that in as well because that dust is very hot at this point. It's usually somewhere around 250, 300 degrees at this point. So, we have temperature sensors all over this drum, monitoring operations at all time. If at any point excess temperatures are registered, it shuts down the process automatically via the control system to prevent any sort of catastrophic problems. And by me catastrophic, you know what that is? A potential fire inside the equipment, not outside the equipment. It's self-contained. But we also don't want fire, if you will, inside of our equipment because it can damage things.
If you stop it, when you restart it, you've got a conglomerate of stuff.
At that point, what we do is we dump that because it's not usable mix at that point. At that point. But what that waste is used for is recycle. Because it is usable, just not in the mix you're currently producing. So, there's no waste in an asphalt plant. We reuse everything. So, and the benefit of this is we are keeping the hot gases away from the liquid asphalt. Well, why is that important? I'm going to tell you. We need to go back and have an understanding of where the asphalt cement itself comes from. It's actually a byproduct of petroleum distillation. And when you go to refinery, what happens is they completely vaporize the crude oil. And they send those gases over into an atmospheric distillation tower. And as you go up in the tower, the temperature's cooling off. And we use that to separate that crude oil out into the different fractions. So, at the top of the tower, you've got the light ends. That's the gasoline, kerosene, jet fuel, you know. And as you come down the tower, you're getting into the heavier oils, the diesels, the fuel oils. And then at the bottom of the tower, that's the asphalt. But because the light ends are really worth more to more people, they usually send the asphalt for additional processing at a refinery. And they apply pressure and heat to get more of the gasoline, the diesel out of it. So, what happens is you end up with an asphalt that's too hard to use either for paving mixtures or even for roofing applications. So, that means they have to artificially soften the asphalt. Well, how do they do that? They add the light ends back in. So, the important thing to take away from that is those light ends have a very low boiling point that come off at relatively low temperatures, about 300 degrees and above. Well, back at the crude oil refinery, how they can vaporize that crude oil is by injecting steam into the process because that enhances how they can get those light ends to vaporize. So, as a manufacturer, we are trying to prevent any of the steam from coming into contact with the liquid asphalt so that those light ends stay in the cement. Because it's necessary to give that binder the characteristics it needs to perform on the roadway where it's going. Now, because we are drying recycle in the outer mixing chamber of the double barrel, there's a small amount of fumes that are generated. But this drum is under negative pressure, including that outer mixing chamber. So, any fumes that are generated during the drying process are pulled back into that inner rotating drum, same dropout holes through which the aggregate gets out of the inner drum. We pull the fumes right back in and we pull it right through the combustion zone. So, we simply incinerate it because it's fuel. So, that's what allows our equipment to process up to 60% recycle without any increase in emissions. We're doing it all around the world. But I also want to draw your attention to the burner itself, which is on the next page. Well, let me go to the twin shaft mixer first and then I'll come back to the burner. I'm going to talk about the burner. The twin shaft mixer receives the dried aggregate and the dried recycle materials from the double barrel. And we put the liquid asphalt out here into this mixer so that we can make the paving mixtures in an inert environment without the presence of steam so that we do not evaporate any of those fumes. So, this actual configuration has the lowest possible fume generation of any equipment we've ever built. We actually developed this technique of doing this to meet some of the environmental regulations out in California. And this is our standard for out there.
Now, is this enclosed or is this open?
It is enclosed. All of the equipment is enclosed. So, going now to the next page, you'll notice that we are going to be using, with the board's approval, getting the plant, a Lowknox burner that has a silencer. Back several years ago, the state of New Jersey developed a new state-of-the-art manual for asphalt plants. And this is basically the New Jersey DEP telling contractors, "This is the environmental regulations your plant must comply with or you don't get your air permit."
Excuse me, when was that?
It went into effect in 2012. And it was reviewed and updated. I looked at it, I think it was some clerical stuff because the emission requirements did not change during their review in September of 2017. So, we're still under the same regulation.
Thank you.
The interesting thing about the SODA is this. They looked at a lot of the air districts out in California where we have equipment. And New Jersey wanted to implement the same type of emission standards here that they have in California. Aztec stepped up to the plate and said, "We'll honor those emission requirements." We're the only manufacturer that would do so. And we have equipment that would meet the original proposed standards for the state of New Jersey. However, other manufacturers balked at that and the state of New Jersey backed down. So, the environmental regulations that are in place right now are not as stringent as originally proposed. But the equipment proposed for L&amp;L paving is in fact capable of much lower emission rates than the state of New Jersey is ever going to require. And it will operate at that lower level at all times because that's what the equipment's designed to do. It's never in one of our customers' best interests to run the plant dirtier. And let me tell you why. Because you're wasting fuel and you're costing yourself money to do that. So, the plant's going to be cleaner when this burner's operating than the state's even going to require for it to be. So, that's a benefit to your community. This burner has a standard silencer. So, if we went out to a plant equipped with this, and it's a Phoenix Talon burner, we can carry on a conversation up on that burner platform like we are right now. Those burners are totally quiet because it's a total air burner, which means that 100% of the air required to fire that burner comes through the burner body itself. That means we're not having to pull any extra air in around the heat shield like on an open fire burner. I know I'm giving you all a lot of information, but I'm trying to tell you, this is better than some of the other equipment that's already in New Jersey. So, when we control 100% of the air coming in, that means we're not pulling in a fixed amount like on an open fire. We're only pulling in just the amount we need based on the firing rate. So, that means the fan is going to be not operating at full speed and we're just throttling it back. No, we're slowing it down because this is a VFD drive on the fan. So, it's much quieter. So, we can stand right on the platform. I'm usually back on the phone with him back at the office and I'm standing up there because I'm not a burner technician. I'm usually over at the exhaust stack with my analyzer reading emissions. But sometimes if I may need to make a tweak on the burner, I'm talking to the guys back on the field and I'm standing at the burner going, "Okay, this is what I'm seeing. What do I need to adjust and how to do it?" So, I'm on the phone right beside the burner, so that quiet. So, moving on. Your fabric filter bag house. We think of it as basically a big industrial vacuum cleaner. It is filled with several hundreds, usually over 1,000. For this size plant, it'll probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,600 cylindrical bags that are periodically cleaned by sending a short burst, we're talking like a quarter of a second, short burst of compressed air down through the bags simply to make the bags shake enough to knock the dust off. And that dust falls down in the hopper where we collect it, send it right back over to become part of the mix. The state of New Jersey has a particulate standard that's half of the federal allowable. The federal allowable, we say we can put out .04 grains per dry standard cubic foot. Doesn't mean anything to most anybody, I'll tell you. For a 400 ton an hour plant, the federal government would allow that plant to put out just under 12 pounds an hour. That's if it was put out the absolute max, it could. State of New Jersey says, "Uh-uh, .02." So, that's about six pounds an hour this plant would be allowed to put out. When this plant is operated and maintained properly, which it will be, it routinely puts out a fraction of that. We're talking a pound or two an hour at most.
How often does the medium have to be changed in there?
You know, there's a lot of variables that go into bag life. But because this plant's going to fire on natural gas, that's like one of the best fuels that you can. 10 years is not unreasonable to expect these bags to last. Now, we, as a manufacturer, recommend that they get out there and do visual inspections on the bags. We recommend that anytime they're getting ready for a stack test, which New Jersey has a fairly involved stack testing program, and they test more frequently here in this state than they do in other states. They also have to do what's known as a black light test. And what that is, is we put fluorescent dust through the equipment looking for leaks. So, there's safeguards. There's also temperature sensors built into this equipment. We're monitoring the differential pressure across the equipment. So, they're again, computer controlled on this entire facility.
Was there any required maintenance? How many tons goes through the plant before you do a dust?
Oh, the black light? No. It comes down to, we tell them to do a monthly visual inspection. If they see any trace dust anywhere on the top of the tube sheet, which is the clean side of the equipment, then we automatically tell them, "Hey, you need to do a black light test." So, some of it initially is just visual or anytime they change the media itself, they have to perform a black light test. As long as they're not seeing anything visible, there's really no reason to perform a black light. This plant's also going to have a dry additive silo that can feed in additional mineral fillers if there's a need in certain mixes to be able to add some additional material. Could be lime, some, I'm not sure if New Jersey uses lime, but that's a common one. It's for anti-strip purposes to keep the liquid from coming off of the aggregates. Next page, we've got those recycle bins in this plant. There's proposed two of them. There'll be a coarse bin and a fine bin. We separate it out in gradations based on the type of mix that that particular recycle is going to be fed into. This plant will be able to process up to about 60% recycle depending on the moistures. And the wrap bin, the wrap conveyors, the screen, all work in exactly the same manner as the cold feed does for the virgin aggregates. The tank farm equipment. You'll have numerous vertical asphalt tanks. The largest, I believe, is 30,000 gallons. There'll also be a hot oil heater. Because as someone asked earlier, "Do we heat the equipment?" Yes. And we do it with heat transfer oil. And so, that heater is located over in the tank farm. And there'll be multiple circuits. You've got one circuit that's dedicated to keeping the asphalt storage tanks hot because you've got to keep the liquid hot enough so that we can pump it through the equipment.
Is that dammed around there?
It is. There will be a containment wall that our engineers at Aztec are usually, our structural engineers are typically involved in sizing that because there are federal regulations that dictate what the capacity of that wall has to be based on the equipment. So, it has to contain 100, it's over 100%. I don't remember that, I'm not a structural engineer, so I don't want to call the number. But I know it's over 100% of the largest tank plus the annual rainfall for this area. So, it's got to be able to contain all that water, less the space occupied by the equipment itself. So, that wall will be big enough that it would contain any one tank if it ruptured.
Is there any, I observed a fire at a tank farm in Philadelphia. And you know, they had the walls and stuff and they were, this is probably 20 years ago. Is there any kind of fire retardant system in case you do get a fire?
To be honest, I'm not sure because a lot of the regulations are per the fire marshal. So, we do different things in different locations. And the tank farm equipment is manufactured by our sister company that's also located there in Chattanooga. So, I don't want to misspeak.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Because I'm just not really sure. But I know that we have to comply with all local fire ordinances and so they do vary a little bit from location to location.
Thank you.
The one thing to keep in mind about the asphalt itself is as soon as you take away its heat source, which in this case, it's hot oil running through pipes within the tanks, it's going to start hardening. Even if there were to be a spill within the walls themselves, A, it's not going to get outside the walls. And really, it's not going to move very far away from the tanks themselves at all. At other locations, if there is an asphalt spill, you wait until it's hardened and you go pick it up. It's not going to go down into the ground or anything like that. It starts hardening pretty quick. It's not shown in this picture. I couldn't find a good picture of a green system in a tank farm. But this plant's also going to have a green system. And what that is, is it's a water injection system that allows us to meter in a certain amount of water that will be injected into the asphalt itself right at the point of entry into the twin shaft mixer. And the purpose of this water injection is to foam the asphalt. Well, when we foam the asphalt, it allows us to produce a paving mixture called warm mix. That's at a much lower temperature as compared to a hot mix. But without sacrificing the behavior of the hot mix. Because you correctly surmised that mix has to be a certain temperature in order to be able to put it down on the side. But when you make warm mix and you have foamed the asphalt using water, so when you inject the water into it, it immediately flashes a steam and that steam gets trapped inside the asphalt. And it foams and it takes it from a very thin coating on all the aggregate to a very thick coating. I mean, it's many times thicker than it normally would be. And so, what it's doing is it's changing the viscosity of the mix itself so that a cooler mix is going to behave like a hotter mix. It allows us to haul it. It allows us to haul it farther. It allows us to work it longer. So it makes it easier for the paving crews to be able to get the compaction and stuff they need. So the benefit to your community is when we make mix at lower temperatures, guess what? We don't fire the burner as hard. So that means we burn less fuel and we lower emissions overall from the facility. And so L&amp;L paving will be able to produce warm mix on all sorts of private mixes. State of New Jersey, the DOT, very specific on what they allow. So state jobs probably won't be able to do it quite as much because that's an ongoing thing of our industry working with various DOTs to get them to accept more and more warm mix. It's a slow process, but we're getting there. And that's going to be a benefit to the entire U.S. as the DOTs come on board.
Will they have to increase the size of the feed pipes from the gas lines? Because that's at a pressure of about seven pounds. You can only get so much gas into your system.
I'm not sure what the gas pressure, I'm not sure if it's seven pounds coming onto their site, but about seven pounds is all we needed our burner to begin with. So even if it came in higher, we'd have to regulate it down.
In a household, take out whatever size pipe it is and usually like with water, you have to go, you've got more people, you need an inch and a half line. I worked a little bit with gas and we had to increase the pipe size in order to get sufficient amount in.
Well, we always have to work with our customers to make sure that they're going to have sufficient supply. So this, the burner, the main plant burner, 100 million BTU an hour output. And so it's got a certain fixed amount of gas it has to have. The hot oil heater, I believe, is about 2 million. So it's very insignificant. So we would work with them to get the appropriate pressure coming on to the site and they, L&amp;L would have to work with their gas supplier. Once it's on the site, we take whatever we're given and we apply the appropriate regulators to get it down to the pressures that our equipment needs to see. And then this last page is the mixed storage silos. They also are heated. They can be done a couple of different ways. I believe these particular silos are proposed to be electric heat. And we're not heating the silos. It's these blankets. It's just blankets that wrap around just the comb, so just the bottom of the silos because we're not trying to heat the mix. We're not trying to do that at all. We're trying to prevent it from losing heat. So there's a difference. These silos will have six inches of insulation around them. So you've got an inner cylinder that's actually containing the mix and then you've got six inches of insulation, then you've got an aluminum skin on the outside. So we're heating that bottom just to prevent that mix from cooling down in any way so that it would not be able to feed. That's what we're trying to do. We don't want it to get stuck in the silos. And the interesting thing about these silos though is, as Lance indicated, they can make their mix during the day. And if they do have paving jobs at night, they don't have to fire up the plant. They would have six 300-ton silos. That's a lot of mix that they could have up in the air where all they have to do is load out into trucks at night.
Are there vibrators in these silos?
No, no.
No vibrators?
No vibrators, no. There's no need. These are a mass flow device. The reason that's important is when we feed out from our silos, first in, first out. So the material feeds straight down there. It doesn't rat hole, if you will. So we're never getting that funnel down through the center. So first material in, first out. And it has to do with the design of the comb itself. So because of the steepness of those combs, there's no need for vibrators and that wouldn't actually work in this type of application anyway because it's already got the liquid in it. There are vibrators over on a couple of the cold feed bins that are not operating continuously. They're only there in case there's a signal into the control house that there's a no-flow situation. Well, no flow can be because A, the lower guy, oops, didn't put any rock in that bin and it ran out. Or it could be that material is bridging. So if material's well and wet, it could be bridging and just not feeding properly. If it's because the material's bridged, they bump the vibrator just enough to get that material flowing again. So the vibrators are never operating continuously.
Now, is that computer operated, the vibrators?
They can be manually operated or they can be automatic. It's really operator's choice. They can go either way.
So how are these silos filled?
Well, the mix that drops out of the twin shaft mixer drops into the bottom of what's known as a drag conveyor. And it's a slack conveyor. So material drops onto the bottom of the conveyor itself. And it has these metal slats that are about 36 inches wide that drags the mix up along the bottom of the conveyor up to that discharge chute. And then it just drops out into the chute. You'll notice there's a bunch of traverse conveyors, which is basically the same thing as a drag conveyor, only they're just going from silo to silo. So the operator will select which silo he wants to feed mix into and it will automatically cut on the appropriate traverse conveyors to get the material over into that silo.
All done by computer?
All done by computers, yes.
Is there any spillage at that point or does nothing get spilled? It just goes right to the silo?
There are seals up there that are meant to keep the material inside the equipment as it's transferring from one device into the other. Because below the traverses, you'll see, there's kind of, it's a little hard to see in this picture, but there are these boxes, we call them batchers, that the material's going to feed out of a traverse and it's going to collect into a batcher. And they will collect five, six tons of mix so that when it drops out of the batcher into the silo, we drop a slug of mix. The reason for this is we don't want the mix to segregate. So segregation, think of it like this. If I have a baseball and a ping pong ball, two different sized balls in my hand and I throw them, they're going to travel different distances because of the weight of them. So it's the same thing. When we have a mix that's got big rocks and small rocks, when it drops out of equipment, it has a tendency to want to behave differently because the mass of the rock is different. So if we do a batcher and we drop an entire slug of mix into the bottom, it doesn't have a tendency to cause that segregation. Okay? So that's something to improve the behavior of the mix once it gets on the roadway itself.
These conveyors, they're enclosed, correct?
Yes, they are.
And how does the truck know which silo to go into?
They're on a radio. So the operator is continuously communicating with the drivers. A lot of our customers also have flashing lights that are underneath the silos. You're not going to see them out anywhere on the site. You have to be in a truck on the scale to see, "Ooh, stop at me." And that's how a lot of customers handle it.
Because they see signs, it looks like signs where the truck is, those are lights.
Yeah, some of our customers have specific mixes that they keep in certain silos. And that's strictly customer preference. From a manufacturer standpoint, we don't care what you put in which silo. But at certain locations, yes, I've seen these signs because they have a lot of the same mixes that they produce over and over. So that people coming to those sites know, "Hey, I'm always going to go to this one silo because I'm picking up this type of mix." That's not always done that way. So L&amp;L may have those signs, they may not. They may switch which mix goes into which silo because they may make more than six. So they may be changing depending on which one's empty.
Thank you.
Can the operator put a video system to see how well that truck is being loaded or if he's in the right position?
Camera systems are very common. So that yes, I was at a plant just several weeks ago that a truck did not pull up properly and so before mix could be discharged, they had to tell the driver, "Hey, you need to pull forward about three more feet." So yes, that's common to have camera systems as well.
Okay. Mr. Butler, we need to kind of wrap it up.
That's, I think this is probably a good place to stop. You've been through the description of generally how the plant works. I think we can bring Ms. Sutton's shoot back maybe at the next meeting, but maybe the meeting after.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
No worries.
When's our next date?
August 27.
Okay. And that's already been scheduled, correct?
Yes, because we're booked up till then.
Okay. Yeah, let me see here. I think we need an extension of time also.
Yes, I will gladly provide that.
Okay. That was August 27? Case number BA 18-06, L&amp;L Paving Company Inc. will be carried to August 27 with no further notice.
What was our extension to end this? I have to give you a new one.
No, it's August 27. I'll go to September at least.
Through September?
Is there any further business at the board?
Yes, we do have a voucher, I'm sorry.
Pass her down real quick.
Yeah, you may as well leave it up. You're welcome.
Can I have a motion to approve the vouchers?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Ms. San Clemente.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roscoe. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any further business at the board? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
First, motion by Mr. Armata.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Senate Board adjournment at 10:10.